Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Today is January 12th, 2021. Is there a motion to call the meeting to order?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
First, we'd like to start off with a happy new year to everyone. Hopefully, it's a happy and prosperous new year for all of our residents and all our employees. Gentlemen, first on the agenda, we have some minutes to be approved, but I looked at the minutes and the formatting seems to be different. I'll say it at least different and not really readable. So I'll make a motion to table those minutes for now.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? And the new business, number one, is a soil removal permit for 588 Middle Road. Gentlemen, I've looked over my paperwork. I don't know if you have anything different in your paperwork, but I do not see a letter from the inspector with the okay on this property for a soil removal permit, and the bylaws call for that. So I did talk to Pat Hanen today as the inspector for the Soil Board, and he said that there's some issues at the property, and that's why we haven't received the letter. So is there a motion to table?
So moved.
I'll second that.
All those in favor? Next up is a request, letter of interest for Lake Street Improvement Committee. Dave DeVignan requests to be appointed to the Lake Street Improvement Committee. Dear Mr. Chairman and Board members, I respectfully request to be appointed to Lake Street Improvement Committee. I believe I am experienced as a civil engineer, could be an asset to the committee. Thank you in advance for your consideration in this matter. Is there a motion to approve Dave DeVignan to the Lake Street Committee?
Mr. Wonah?
So moved.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. The next is a letter of resignation from Henry Young, the Planning Department, and also some discussion on a temporary planner appointment discussion. Mr. Young writes, Ms. Hebert, I am ready to let you know that I will be leaving my position as Planner Special Project Manager next month. My last day of the Town of Akushnet will be January 11th, 2021. Although I've enjoyed my tenure with the Town of Akushnet, it's time for me to follow other pursuits and spend more time with my family. It has been a pleasure working with you, Lisa, the Department Chair's residents and the members of the Akushnet Board of Selectmen over the years. I wish you and the Board of Selectmen continued success in serving the citizens of Akushnet. I'd like to go on the record and thank Mr. Young for his time spent in the Town of Akushnet. Great guy, did a good job in the time that he was here, and I wish Mr. Young continued success in his future as well. Gentlemen, anything to say on that?
Yes, all the best to Mr. Young and his future ventures.
Yep, likewise.
Next, they have on the agenda Town Planner Departure Status Report. Mr. Young was kind enough in his departure to fill out, which is probably the first for me to see something like this. It's a big list of to-dos, things that he was working on. It's a punch list of roughly 19 different matters. There's a few here that were, I know, difficult for Henry with some controversy going back and forth. And one of them was a subdivision off of Peckham Road. That's his first one on the list. The second one was proposed commercial development for what we know as Tony Service Station over here. He goes through some issues, and I just want to address this one because it's probably one of the biggest projects that we'll have. He says, goes on, "Site plan review and approval is required. This proposal is for a 4,200-square-foot gas station and convenience store with a drive-through service within the Business Village District. This project is currently in public hearing process continuation. The project is not in compliance with the Akushnet zoning bylaws. Drive-through use is not permitted in the Village District, Business District. Building size exceeds thresholds, and the planning board anticipated that the developer would come into December Planning Board Public Hearing with a revised plan. They did not show up. The meeting was continued until January. If the developer does not show up in January, the planning board will most likely deny the project, avoiding constructive approval. If they do show up, the expectation will be that they present, A, a revised plan in compliance with the Akushnet zoning bylaws, a traffic study." And he goes on to say, "The planning board's role is to conduct a site plan review." And I know that this is something that's been back and forth, back and forth, back and forth. And I spoke on this way back when Mr. Cabral was chairman of the Board of Selectmen about the process and how it should be done and where it should go first. I'm still inclined, and I know there's some back and forth again on this. And I think to be fair to the developer and the residents, somebody actually needs to say, "This is what we need to do." And I don't believe that, as Mr. Young states, and this was particular interest of mine, that they have not submitted a new plan, albeit I have heard that there is a new one as of the last 48 hours, I believe, that might be brought into the town, although I have not seen that proposed new plan. And I know that they have ZBA going back and forth with all of that. Gentlemen, I just want a note to the board, to Ms. Hebert, the Town Administrator, to the residents of Akushnet. My perspective, at least from my perspective, is, I said it before, and I'm going to say it again. This development should be, and everybody knows it, Henry Young says site plan approval is needed, traffic study is needed. I would go on to say stormwater peer review is needed as well, and maybe anything else. However, this is back and forth thing. I think the planning board needs to take the lead on this project and get a plan, review it, have site plan review done, peer review done, a traffic study done. And then that, I believe, at the end of that study will determine for the developer what size property can and cannot be built here. There's a lot of questions about the size of this property. Mr. Young says 4,000 square feet. Once that has occurred and established through site plan review in the traffic study, then I would think that it would go to ZBA for anything above the threshold of 3,000 that's in our bylaw book. There seems to be some confusion on who's taking the lead in the role. Mr. Merritt commented in numerous months past that it should go to planning board for these exact reasons because they're the only ones with the capability of doing site plan review, and I agree with that. Not only did he do that, he agrees, Mr. Merritt agrees in communications that I've seen, as well as Town Council, that it does require site plan approval, a traffic study. And I'm adding the stormwater peer review because we have a new stormwater bylaw that needs to be adhered to. I'm concerned more so with this one because it is a big development in town, and I encourage that development. I truly do. I think that corner needs to be cleaned up. I commend that part of the aspects of the project, but I think somebody needs to set in stone, say, "Hey, we're losing track of the timeline." And Mr. Young goes on, and he says right here, "Avoiding constructive approval," which means if the planning board doesn't act on it from when the application was set forth, or the ZBA, this project goes through without any public opinion, planning board oversight, ZBA oversight. It's just going through. We can't have that here in the Town of Akushnet. It needs to go through the right process. I'm hopeful, even with Mr. Young's departure, that Mr. Sinnerizio, the chairman of the planning board, will let the developer understand and know that this process, this is the process that needs to take place, and they go through that process and allow the developer to know, quite honestly, it's not right for the developer, for the town, to be Mickey Mouse and back and forth. This is what can be done. This is what we can grant you in special permits, and this is how things need to be built to be in compliance with our bylaws. And that's all I'm asking for this process to occur. I hope that does occur because everybody's in agreement, Jim Merritt, myself, Henry, Town Council, that that's the way it should occur. So I'm asking hopefully the planning board to watch this meeting, Mr. Sinnerizio at the least, to watch this meeting and call that developer in and explain this to the developer. Or the developer can watch this and say, "Thanks for somebody stepping up to the plate and saying this is what needs to be done" because I think it's just go here, go there, and nothing's being done. And if that timeline is fragmented, I think there's going to be a lot of accountability issues going on in the town amongst not only the elected officials, but appointed officials. And I do not want to see that occur with a project of this magnitude. I don't know if you gentlemen have any comments on that, but I just, I want some clarity for the developer as well as the people that are in that neighborhood. Most importantly, I think it's important that the developer made a sizable investment, and I don't think it's right to string him along with the process by the town and the people there responsible dragging their feet. Any comments?
No, I think he said it.
Thank you. Okay. Mr. Young, gentleman, he's got a lot. I mean, there's a lot of things going on here, a lot of solar farm projects and things of that nature, few developments where he's given his thing. I'm sure you gentlemen have looked through this. Again, he's got some things that he's, he even puts points of contact for all of his things, who would be best to represent things. That could change. I'm not saying it can't change, but Selectmen Wonah, Dan Minah, Julie Hebert, Merrill Lee on certain things, Mr. Sinnerizio on certain things, the Riverview Park thing, Mr. Wonah's worked on some of that project already. I have Riverview, a continuation of that. He's got Mr. Wonah, point of contact to deal with that Coalition of Buzzards Bay. So I just want to go off on an olive branch. And again, it's pretty detailed. He didn't leave the town high and dry, and I respect Mr. Young for not doing that. And I commend Mr. Young for doing that. I think it's really commendable that he took that stance and took the time to issue this to the Board of Selectmen. And I'm grateful for this status report presented by Mr. Young. It's great work, and I appreciate his time. So that's really all I have on the departure status report unless you gentlemen have any other comments to do with it.
Yep, Mr. Chairman, I just have a comment. So is it fair to assume that the Planning Commission will be hosting online for a new planner for the town, part-time planner for the town?
Yeah, it's a good question. I would assume it's, I believe under the bylaws, it's under their purview. So I mean, if it's under their purview, you know, I would hope so and they would do it right away to see what's going on. Because I know there's a lot. We've talked about this book, this bylaw book, a lot. It was brought up at town meeting. It's caused a lot of friction in the town with discrepancies, including with some of our employees. So I would hope that the next town planner that comes in would initiate that goal of trying to sit down with that bylaw book and seeing where there is contradiction, where there are gray areas, and try to rebuff that, those bylaws, so they're not contradicting each other and convoluted, quite honestly, in the future. So that's entirely up to the planning board.
Mr. Chairman, as a follow-up to Mr. DeRouche's question, I think there's a couple of things that stood out, that stand out here in sort of the elephant in the room. One, it was brought up at town meeting, Henry's status as a special projects manager. Two, it was a part-time position. People believed it was a full-time position. I think moving forward, I think it behooves this board because the last 15 or so years, we've had essentially, it's a shared service. And I think as a board, we should have a discussion as to whether or not we want to continue that relationship. I think moving forward, that the board should not be in a shared relationship with the planning board because I think that gray area led to some of the discussion that took place at town meeting and confused some of the important issues that we need to address, such as a master plan. I'm a big believer in the master plan. I believe we need to move forward with a master plan, probably the number one issue facing this town, aside from COVID and the pandemic. But, you know, we got some big time issues going on. And we can, you know, we could have a joint discussion with the planning board as the town fathers to make sure that they were in alignment and on the same page. But I do think we should pull back from that shared services, special project manager relationship because what it started off as, what it became, and then what it ended up deteriorating to culminating at town meeting, I do not want to repeat that moving forward.
I couldn't agree with you anymore, Mr. Wonah. I think it's, it would, you know, with all the things that have been said and done and everything else, and it's just been a screwed up situation. And again, it's not so much, it's never been about the person. It's more about the position, right? And I do believe that the planning board deserves to have. I think they need a part-time planner, a 19 and a half hours planner.
And the chairman, yeah, I would go one step further from my personal opinion. That's part of the issue. I think we need a full-time planner, quite frankly. Big enough issues, 19 and a half hours, we know full well. And I think that's, you know, what sometimes I think was to Henry's detriment is as a part-timer, people assumed he was on the clock 24/7 and dealing with issues. We got, as you can see with that exit memo, there's a lot going on. It's not a 19 and a half hour job. We can do it that way and have the problems that we have, such as New England farms or some of these bylaw, you know, discrepancies.
Yeah, that's true.
Full-time position, in my opinion, the towns, it's an opportunity cost if we don't have a full-time planner. And, you know, for the extra 20 or so thousand dollars a year, I think we could make that up in capturing opportunity, mitigating problems, mitigating lawsuits, you name it. I think we're at a point now where we want to be, you know, we want to be a town that has its act together in a full-time planner and a master plan to coincide with that, I think, is job number one.
Yeah, I think that that needs to be vetted out through the budget season and with the planning board, Selectmen Wonah, and, you know, see where we're at. I mean, it's, I don't know. I think it just needs to be discussed a little further, that's all. So if it warrants a full-time one, it'll warrant a full-time one. We'll look into it and see what's out there and see what we can do, whether it's 19 and a half hours we start with or it's full-time we start with. That to be determined, I guess.
Well, Mr. Chairman?
For a town our size, yep.
Since we opened the box here, you know, I'm a little concerned about our immediate needs. I just want to make sure that the planning board, you know, we lost a member of the planning commission, you know, that the needs are filled, that they're able to do the work. We have some, as seen here, we have 19 projects that Henry was working on. So we want to be able for the town to proceed, you know, in a direction with these. And if we need to find somebody, well, once again, it's not the select board's, you know, place to hire somebody. But, you know, I'd be concerned if we couldn't fulfill and keep the pace with what's going on in the town. So if a part-time person was picked to fill in the holes, you know, I think that would work.
Yep. Ultimately, ultimately, in the end, it all comes down to town meeting vote. So we'll figure it out. We figured out a lot bigger things in the past, and we'll continue to figure this out moving forward. And, you know, we can have discussions about it in the future, master plans and all of that stuff, and how it should be conducted. You know, the planning board, and try to work with the planning board, and hopefully we'll establish, we'll maintain and establish a better working relationship there, and we'll see where we end up. Depends on the candidates, right, for hiring. So, gentlemen, Mr. Hanen has actually expressed some interest in the special projects manager position that we have in our budget. Mr. Wonah just spoke on that, separating, keeping those two positions separated. Ms. Hebert had made some comments to me earlier today on that. You know, that position's also open, and Selectmen Wonah and I are kind of in agreement when it comes to that, keeping those two things separated as far as that goes, as far as going after grants and things of that nature. So, Ms. Hebert, you have anything to add to that conversation? Because I think that Mr. Hanen expressed some interest also in the planning position, but because that's an appointment by the part-time planner's position, but because that's under the purview of the planning board, we're going to leave that to them.
Yep. So I mean, if there's, of course, just as the planning board could do, if we wanted to have an interim hire while we decide, you know, how we want that position to look, we're more than welcome to make that kind of appointment right now as well. But I agree that it's, you know, the Board of Selectmen's purview right now is just the special project manager.
Well, Mr. Chair, I was alluding to that in my comments. I might have come off finishing it by saying part-time person. I meant just someone to fill in the holes until we hire somebody, whether it be part-time or full-time. You know, does the planning board have enough staff and are able to carry through these things? Because we do have, as you mentioned, Mr. Hanen, who has worked on solar projects and MVP grants. You know, so my just concern or comments are just that we don't fall behind with the things going on right now. Thank you.
Selectmen Wonah, I might be missing something, Selectmen Wonah, so I apologize if I am. We went in and started talking about special project manager. Then we said keeping part-time. And in the interim, Ms. Hebert, were you alluding to, Mr. Sinnerizio was okay with an interim for now until they advertise, albeit part-time, full-time, whatever it may be?
Yeah, so the last I talked to the planning board, I talked to the chair, Mark Sinnerizio, he seemed on board with having an interim person. And since then, you know, we kind of went through the bylaws and found that it's something that the planning board needs to appoint. So I haven't talked to him since to see, you know, what they want to do for a process. But I do think they are interested in potentially having an interim to work out the details of the job description in the meantime and, you know, get a chance to fully vet through interviews and everything, but not lose any continuity in the meantime. So I think if we want to consider the same for our side, I think it would be helpful. Again, you know, there's a lot of projects that Henry was in the middle of, working for the Selectmen. It would be nice to not lose any of that momentum and have an interim person, at least in the meantime, to keep that going.
Okay, so again, I'm still caught up on this thing here. The, we, so I was, when I opened that up, the dialogue up, the special project manager, I figured, I talked to Mr. Hanen, and yes, he does have that, and he's got a lot of knowledge about bylaws, this, that, and the other thing, knows about solar farms, as Mr. DeRouche said. And I know that he's been involved with MVP grants from his community and kind of the do's and don'ts. And I know Henry started to do some things with MVP grants, and he's got the complete streets one that we'll talk about a little bit. But then we went into this part-time planner thing again. But it's clearly, if you're telling me that appointment is under the purview under the planning board, but you're saying that you spoke with Mr. Sinnerizio, and he's okay with that idea until they go out and get a job description and hire? So what are you asking the board?
So the Board of Selectmen, what I'm looking for right now is if you would like to vote to have an interim special project manager. I know Pat Hanen's interested. I think he's qualified for it. That portion of the job is under the Selectmen's purview. So if you would like to appoint Pat Hanen as the interim special project manager, I think that would be helpful. But yeah, the planning board, I do have to follow up with Mark Sinnerizio in the planning board to see what their goal is. I think they are interested in voting to have an interim person in the meantime, but I haven't spoke to him since last week, so I don't know if anything changed on that. So that is under their purview to hire an interim or just, you know, hire the planner?
That's fine. I mean, if that's the way the bylaws are written, then I'd rather have the Board of Selectmen. As far as that goes, being the hiring authority, so be it. That's what the bylaws say. That's what we abide by and let the planning board do it. And if they want to do something with an interim person, and they want it to be Pat Hanen to help out, finding Danny, they can do that. However, Mr. Wonah and I, I think, are in consensus when it comes to keeping the position split. So if we make an appointment as the special projects manager, that's fine. I don't care if he did them both for the next five months because that's what's left in this fiscal year, and there's only money available to work within what you work within. And if that's what planning wants to do, that's fine. But I'd like to get somebody, I'd like to appoint Mr. Hanen, to be quite honest, for the special project manager position and see what we can get out of him.
Well, at this time, it's my understanding that it's the board of the planning board's decision to see.
No, not special project manager. That's in a Selectmen's budget.
That $11,000?
That's correct.
That we have as a line item?
That is correct.
Well, then I'd make a motion to approve an interim under the special projects portion of the Selectmen's office.
Mr. Chairman, with all due respect, there's a motion on the table. I'll second it for discussion. But I don't know that this has been properly vetted. This is the first I've heard of it in a public forum to discuss that. I don't know, you know, I think we've got to have a conversation about that. There's, it's not as clear-cut. I mean, we've got Pat working on some other issues in town that need his ultimate focus on. Like I said, this is the first I've heard of it in a public forum like this. And, you know, past precedent, we've said, I don't know if it's been properly vetted. I'd like to give it some thought before we do that. I mean, look, we've got special projects that are going on, air quotes. Really, it's shared streets. And I don't know that we have to make a hastily move, a move this quickly to get a special projects manager in there right now, like to table.
We are in the middle of applying for grants, Selectmen Wonah, now. And that chain will be broken for how long? You know, and it is under our purview that we could, in our budget, it's a position that's already established. It's not the creation of it. I don't know.
Maybe there's somebody else out there, though. I just, like I said, this is getting sprung on me tonight, the first time I've heard about it in a public forum. And, you know, as we discussed the master plan, we were told that that wasn't properly vetted. So something like this, I think, to be consistent with that, I'm not prepared, and I'd ask the board to hold off until we're able to properly vet this out.
Selectmen DeRouche, you have comments?
Well, with respect to Mr. Wonah's concerns, I'm okay with tabling it for a period of time so we can discuss it in executive session, if need be, and come to a determination. But my main concern is starting to fall behind on the number of projects that are in front of the town. And I know it is going to be a period of time before we hire a new person or that the planning board hires a new person. And that's my concern of bringing this all to the forefront tonight.
I'll allow it, at this point, to be continued for two weeks. We have a meeting next week, a public hearing, and then our next formal Selectmen's meeting will be two weeks. Mr. Wonah, I would suggest that you get together with Ms. Hebert, talk about this, whatever your concerns may be with Mr. Hanen, taking this into the interim. You know, I was looking at this as just that, Selectmen Wonah, where you make the appointment, get them in there, keep up with our grants. And then from there, if the board so chooses to continue it as permanent, we could do that as well. And if we felt that the job wasn't getting done, then we could head in a different direction with it. So that's my thought on that.
Okay, great, thanks.
Very good.
We'll give it a couple of weeks to mull this all over and figure some things out and tighten up some loose ends. And Ms. Hebert, please make yourself available.
Okay.
And let Mr. Sinnerizio know that he... He's, he's got to post a job. The next one is a, well, it's a letter from a concerned resident regarding rep wells. Resident wants to remain anonymous, not happy with all the vehicles being stored on the property. Mr. Merritt. Has addressed some of Rep. Wells. Issues out there. In fact, gentlemen. Is something on the next, so on number five, I'm not going to go into detail about reading it, just about all the cars being on the property and not in conforming use. Mr. Merritt sent out a letter basically agreeing. What the residence complaint is for zoning conformity. And things of that nature and goes on through his letter. And that's the reason why we held. That business permit license. So. Ms. Hebert brought some things to light 10 minutes before my meeting with some further findings when it comes to this property. So unless and until we receive a letter of satisfaction from Mr. Merritt with the outstanding issues on whether or not. We approved the license, which we did not. So technically. That, that property is being operated without a license come the new year, January 1st. Mr. Merritt, Ms. Hebert, you need to get with Mr. Merritt and I think you're working with Mr. Merritt and Town Council because of some old. How it fell back on previous owner goes back, you know, 30 years or whatever and all that stuff. So. Gentlemen, the Rep. Well, licensed transfer discussion. Obviously, we cannot renew that or transfer that. Due to the conditions at the property in the building, the zoning enforcement officer not being satisfied with those conditions. So is there a motion to table?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Number six, the golf course. Is going for a golf cart, five-year lease approval. And I know they done this a couple of years ago and it's every, what, Missy, the five years or something like that, the regular one, but that's for the. The 60-something cots that they did. And now they're doing the other 14. Cots plus one additional, because I think it's some kind of special cut. And they're also trading in. One of our old ones at a trade-in value of somewhere around 14,000 bucks. And every year, the payment, as they always break it out over five years, for the 14 cots is the, in the amount of 9,932 dollars and 66 cents. It's roughly 50,000 bucks. After the trade-in, it looks like that will be. $36,000. So Ms. Hebert, I don't know if you've looked at this paperwork or not, I hope you have, but. It says total year payment. If, if that's the case, is that already factoring in the trade-in amount? The 9,932 over the five years? Because when I do the math. It won't come out to that for five years if it's getting, if they're getting a trade-in on 14,000 bucks knocked off these numbers.
Yeah, it's supposed to be net of all the trades. Let me just check. Cause I'm, I'm looking to see what the interest was. That might be the difference. But yeah, that was supposed to be net all of the trades, the amount of payment each year.
Okay, so that's minus the. Oh, I see what it is. It's a thousand bucks on the 14 cots. That equals the 14 grand. Yep, yep, yep. So it looks like all the paperwork's in. Ms. Hebert, is that coming from the budget or is that coming from a previous article? Do you know how that funding would be?
That's from the capital. Article, but I think they'll have to put this into their budget. Going forward, every year, we have the other lease payments under the, I think it's called golf cart leases on the budget.
Yep.
They'll add this into that, but the initial year will be.
It may already be incorporated in there. I don't know. They might just leave that number bundled right in there. I know there's like a two-year separation from the leases. I don't know why that is, but it is what it is. You know, where they're staggered. They started 60-something car, I think, two years ago or whatever. So. Is there a motion to approve the expenditure, gentlemen, as presented?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And if you, and if you can, sorry. Does, there's a signature on there. They already have my name in there. So if the board can just approve me to sign on their behalf. That would be great.
Is there a motion to have Ms. Hebert, you know, her signatures already somewhere on this paperwork to sign on this expenditure only?
Motion to approve.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All set, Ms. Hebert? The request for reserve fund transfer, Lake Street Secretary, $2,000.
Julie, I'm happy to speak to that gentleman. We're looking for a little administrative help with this Lake Street project. There's going to be some filings that need to take place, but one of the challenges that we have. Is that we're meeting primarily by Zoom. And the purpose of the committee is to get. You know, input from the members and it's, you know, there's a lot of discussion and dialogue. As the chair of the committee, I'm trying to take notes and get minutes and action items and this and that. So we're just looking for some additional administrative support. You know, we've got a 15-member committee. And whether we utilize all this money. Remains to be seen, but it's to, to keep the committee moving. Get the, the various subcommittees, the, you know, the follow-up information that they're looking for and. You know, it's taken on a life of its own and we're just looking for a little admin support to keep this moving. And then once the project gets. Off the ground and completed, then we'll, we'll just expand that.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's very consistent with what we do in other committees, Mr. Wonah. So I have no problem whatsoever. In supporting you, you and that committee with that help. I could imagine. It's getting a little busy and paperwork being shuffled around and somebody to keep everything in an organized place and on file would be very helpful for the committee. Is there a motion to approve the reserve fund transfer in the amount of $2,000 for Lake Street Improvement Secretary?
So moved.
There a second? I'll second it. I'll second it. Mr. Wonah's uncomfortable because he's on the committee. All those in favor?
Aye.
And the other one is for engineering fees. Looks like a reserve fund transfer for engineering fees, $10,000 for shared street grants and. I know that this is something, no matter what, we'd be spending on. And I think for that complete streets. Shared streets grants. Hopefully we'll get it. If not, we'll have a design plan on hand for future grant funding. Maybe part of the transportation bond bill, if that ever gets released, that money gets released. I know this is something, this is for the sidewalks, gentlemen. On Slocombe Street continuation. I know that's something that's been on the radar for quite some time. I've been talking about, I think, over the last year, year and a half, any opportunity that's come up. For these kind of grants, I always think of that. Project first, because it's, it's, it needs to be done. It's long overdue. And there would be a great project to clean up that Slocombe Street and make a nice little walkway. Residents. So is there a motion to approve in the amount of $10,000? For the engineering fees for shared streets grants, the sidewalks.
So moved.
I'll second that.
And Julie, we've been notified by Mr. Young that that's, that's a, you know, an estimate, right? Probably a pretty good estimate in his opinion.
Yeah. And, and obviously the number ends up coming back higher. I'll let you know so we can transfer any additional money, but that should be a good estimate.
Okay, so there's a motion to approve. Is there a second?
I made that second. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mona. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, number eight, cares update, Ms. Hebert. I know I don't have anything in my book on this, so I'll turn it over to you, Ms. Hebert.
Just in general. At the end of the year, we originally had a deadline. We had to spend all the cares money by December 30th. And that's now been extended through the end of FY21. Which is great because, you know, as you all know, you know, we hit the end of the year, we still had a good amount of money left. And, you know, you don't want to lose out on money, but you need something valid to spend on. So. You know, you get kind of that rush to spend and we didn't get to spend all the money. But now that there's an extension, it's nice, you know, we, we talked at the end of the year about. Continuing to do testing. And if we had to cover it with our own general fund expenses, we'd be able to do that. And now with the extension of cares, we can still use the cares money to help cover the cost of all of our testing efforts. So. As of now, that's all we really have on the table for cares money. I, I checked the accountant, we're looking at under 100,000 left, I believe, after. And the chief was able to buy a lot of supplies for the testing. But I'll keep you updated on that. And the other piece, the FF CRA extension. Is essentially, again, this was a benefit that was tied into. The government stimulus at the beginning of the pandemic. It's a relief act benefit that allows paid time off for employees. It was mandated through the end of December. And unfortunately, this was not extended as a mandated requirement. It wasn't extended into this calendar year. But the government did say that if companies choose to extend the benefit, they can voluntarily do so and they can still use. Cares money to help cover the cost. And just to refresh you all, the benefit is up to two weeks of paid leave if you either have. COVID or if you're caring for a family member who has COVID or you're under quarantine. And it also has extensions for up to 12 weeks at two-thirds pay. If you have to be out due to childcare for all the people who lost childcare or students who are working remotely. So. The school, the Christian schools already voted to extend this benefit to the school employees. Through the end of March, March 31st. And so I'm looking to see if the board of selectmen will also vote to extend. The voluntary benefit through the end of March for the town employees as well. And again, any, anybody who takes this benefit. It's covered, the, the pay for them is covered by CARES Act.
Yeah, Julie, did you say? 10 weeks or two weeks?
It's two weeks for anything COVID-related, whether you have it or you're under quarantine. And that's a two-week max. So if you took it, you know, in April of last year, you, you'd only get the two weeks. And anytime that you have to take off from there, you use your own paid time off. But you have two weeks and then the childcare is 12 weeks, up to 12 weeks total.
Week allotment do pay for childcare? An employee to be out for 12 weeks?
So if an employee has to be out to cover childcare or, you know, if the student is home. From school, working, doing remote work for school and the parent needs to be home with the child. And that's covered at two-thirds of their pay for up to 12 weeks total. Yeah.
Well, there are 12 weeks left between now and the deadline, though. Right?
Yep.
Well, hopefully that don't happen. I don't think we can afford to lose an employee for 12 weeks or 10 weeks or whatever. Well. You know, I understand the two-week period for somebody that attracts the COVID-19. Things of that nature. So. And you mentioned we're just under $100,000 left in that CARES Act that we didn't expend, but we did some forward spending with the testing that to prep up the chief. So we were on the hook for salaries and things of that nature. And is that, is you, with that 100 grand that you're talking about, is that? In consideration with, remember, we said that some of it'll be FEMA reimbursed. So did we look at all the expenditures from CARES Act and then? See what we can get out of FEMA and reimbursable? And that didn't lodge in that pool up or?
The last I talked to the accountant, that was the, that was the best number and that's using. Certain assumptions. We still haven't fully heard back from FEMA what they're covering, but with a lot of. Certainty, they are covering PPE for first responders and testing. So the testing for us has been a huge expense. And knowing that 75% of that is being covered by FEMA has been, you know, huge impact for us. But yeah, we're still, we're still looking at around 100,000 left. With FEMA covering those items.
So I guess we would be looking, if the board so chooses, I'm okay with approving it, but only until the money runs out, right? I mean, between the school and the town side. If you blow out the 90,000, say there's a 90,000, 100,000, whatever left over, if that money's gone in three weeks. This is gone as well, right?
Well, I mean, it, it's, it's a benefit. So, you know, people's salaries are built into the budget as is. So. It wouldn't, it, it helps us to relieve it with CARES money, but essentially it's just like any other paid time off.
Right, but it wouldn't be taken from the employee's sick pool, like that. So I guess. There's two ways you can make the motion, motion to approve with the depletion of the funding or motion to improve until the March 31st deadline, which could run into. Other. Funding sources. Is that fair to say?
Yep.
Gentlemen, there's an option. Is a motion to approve until funding from the CARES Act runs out and there's a motion just to approve until the March 31st deadline?
Well, I'll make a motion to approve till the CARES Act money runs out.
I got that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And. The last one is fiscal year 22 budget. Ms. Hebert, I'll let you run that through the board. I, I kind of know what this is all about. So if you want to.
And so. You know, we're looking at the start of another budget season, which is crazy. But we're, you know, I've been working with the accountant and we've been gathering budgets from people. What I've suggested to departments is level funded budget. You know, we, we're still in the dark on FY22. We've been lucky that FY21 has worked out so well, where the government has been able to level fund. Its revenues to the towns, but we have no guidance yet as to what FY22 will look like. All guidance is that it's, it's going to be a tough year. So. Looking forward, I know in past years, it's been brought up that the selectmen would like to meet with departments early and before the finance committee. So that the meetings aren't duplicative, where, you know, a department might meet with the FinCom and then meet with the board of selectmen and make changes. And waste the time with the finance committee. So I'd really like to see if we can get a plan in place to set up some type of meeting schedule with departments. So the board of selectmen can meet and kind of vet through a first round of budgets before everyone has a chance to sit down with the finance committee and kind of go through that process.
Yeah, I mean. We've been around for a little while. I, I think that the problem in the past. Is the, some of our town departments, gentlemen, are going to the finance committee before the board of selectmen actually voted on the budget. And I know right now it's a little bit tough. So Ms. Hebert and I had a discussion on the budget. And we got some significant roadblocks in front of us. So I'll be sitting down with Ms. Hebert again. And talking to her over the budget process on monies available. We kind of got a. Kick in the teeth from Old Colony. I mean, their budget, I think the last word of Old Colony's budget was up somewhere around 325,000 dollars for the year. And there's some contributing factors to that. Ms. Hebert sent out an earlier one, I think, to all members of the board. And said something to the effect that it's, you know, we got more students and I made a comment that to Ms. Hebert that, you know, we were paying. Back when I was a liaison in between 2005 and 2010, like 7,500 bucks, they were the cheapest high school. And based on Ms. Hebert's numbers for this fiscal year, it's more like $21,000 per student. That's a college degree. So, but there are some other impacts outside of the norm. If you said $10,000 per student, you had 15 students added, that's automatic 150,000 bucks. What was brought to my attention is the town of Freetown, and I've spoken to some, some folks in Freetown and. There is some truth to it. It looks like Freetown has chosen to go to a different regional school. So they basically pulled that rug right out. So what that means for the other five member towns that were in the original agreement. What that means is we pick up the cost of all those students that were going from Freetown. We're left to absorb those students. So I haven't have, I haven't had an opportunity to look at those numbers yet. I'm familiar with Old Colony very well, I spent in five years as the liaison from the finance committee. So I look forward to looking at that and scrutinizing as much as I can. Howbe it some of those things are out of the school's control. So. And again, gentlemen. The way that agreement works is, and that budget works is a. and again, gentlemen, the way that agreement works is, and that budget works is it makes it extremely difficult for one town to have an impact and just say, now we can't afford that. It takes three member towns out of the five to say no to that budget and make them go back to the table. That's, that's what makes it extremely difficult in that regional agreement. Um, for us, I've, I've fought that battle a few times, um, to no success because we couldn't get two other member towns. Um, one was the best we could do back in those best past years. So it's tough. The school does a great job. We just got to take a look at the budget, Ms. Hebert and I, and have some dialogue over that and try to get some feedback to Mr. Polanski, the superintendent over there. I know him pretty well. So we'll see what we can do and and I'll open up some dialogue with other member towns that I have relationships with and see how they feel and you know, you might be stuck swallowing that pill for three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. That's a pretty significant hit to our available funding. So, um, and I think it's important that Ms. Hebert kind of hit the nail on the head. I, I don't like the idea. We have town departments going to the finance committee and presenting a budget that the Board of Selectmen haven't reviewed and approved yet. Because if the Board of Selectmen decide to change that budget, then they have to go back through that process again. And we're kind of just spinning our wheels and wasting FinCon's time. Um, I've been in that seat. It's not, it's not great to be doing that and they get a lot of work cut off of them. And it's easy when you level fund budgets to make cuts. They say, okay, we met the budget requirements, funds are available. Great. Have a nice day. But when you get everybody, you know, digging at the bucket of money, um, and, and it's split up and you don't have enough, that creates, um, a little bit of a problem for FinCon. So I, I want to try to be as kind to those members as possible. Um, and keep that order or pecking order in place so that we'll see them and then we'll follow them off to FinCon if, if the Board of Selectmen is satisfied with their budget. Is that okay with the, the board?
It is, Mr. Chairman. If I could just maybe take it one step prior to, um, I think it would be good for everybody in town. Residents, all town depart, you know, all town entities, before we even get into departmental budgets, is to know what the overall fiscal health of the town is. And, you know, I, about a month and a half ago, I suggested first of the year, we do an all hands on deck presentation from our finance team. What, what, what we have for money, what we don't have for money, what's in stabilization, what we think we can afford and level set it for everybody before anybody even pulls out a pen and paper and start thinking about developing a departmental budget. Set the tone and then people can go work with Julie on, you know, their departmental budgets before they come for the selectmen. I think people need to hear from us. But to, to not do that as the first step in the process, I think then sets us up for failure down the road, that everybody should be hearing the same message, you know?
We, we, we will do that.
Um, so I think that would be the first, the subject for the next meeting, the, the most important subject matter at our next selectman's meeting is to get it. Now with Zoom, every, all people have to do is log on, right? It's really easy to do.
Yep, I agree. Selectmen Wonah, Ms. Hebert and I, we discussed that as well. We, we need to know what's there. Um, and have that conversation, big picture first, like you just said, big picture first. This is the available funding. Then we know what fixed costs are and things like that. You scratch that off and then you say, hey, this is what's left and, and how we're going to go about the budget process this year, um, hopefully and stay within our means, right? And that's, that's the goal. Um, look, I, I hate to be the bearer of bad news, but I think we can all sit here and say the same thing again. We were thankful that the government level funded state aid and local receipts last year. Um, and it's state aid, I'm sorry, not local receipts and the cherry sheet and all that. But I don't see that coming out of, they had to tap state, the state stabilization. And quite honestly, state sales aren't going to be what they were. So we don't know what's going to come out of them. So again, you got to airwood caution, um, and, and figure that out. That's the dialogue that we'll have at the upcoming selectman's meeting, I'm sure.
Very good.
Right on, I'm right on board, um, Selectmen Wonah. That's the, that's the way it needs to be done. Ms. Hebert, you have anything else to add to that? Ms. Hebert?
Me? Nope, I'm good.
Okay, thank you.
Ready for you.
And gentlemen, the, uh, we got a chapter ninety reimbursement expense from Mr. Menard and DPW in the amount of twenty-five thousand four hundred and ninety-four dollars and ninety-four cents. Is that correct, Ms. Hebert? I'm reading the right number?
Yep, twenty-five, four ninety-four, ninety-four.
And that was to do Wilber Ave over by the police station, first street, um, on the left when you're coming from Town Hall, heading towards the police station from this direction, heading north on Middle Road. That was all monies appropriated originally and, and bid out um, by a, a local company, but we pulled those because it expired over the year and we had subbed that out to do Conduit, Wilbur. Um, I forgot the other two streets. There's two other streets over there and it's not dialing, whatever they are, Homestead and, and whatever the other one.
Is it Dawson? Wait, is it Dawson?
No, no, it's, um, Homestead, Wilbur and whatever the other one is, it's right in between them, right, right in line with them. There's three on this, on Middle Road and then Conduit across the whole top that goes over to where Townline Liquors is and the little variety store there. Um, we own to like ten feet in from that. So I guess with the property line. So that was already pre-approved, but then we, we, we drew that contract award because it expired. Um, we had the ability to do that. We purchased the asphalt paving machine. And now we're doing it in-house, um, and saving a boatload of money by doing that. Um, it's time consuming for our crew to do it, but we get a lot more road miles and a lot more roads paved, which our town is in desperate need of doing. So is there a motion to approve the chapter ninety funds in the amount of twenty-five thousand four hundred and ninety-four dollars and ninety-four cents?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Uh, town administrators report.
Um, I'm upset. I have nothing.
Selectmen's announcements. I just have a couple of things. Uh, I did receive a phone call from Ms. Texera, um, the historic commission's chairperson, member for decades. She's, she's, um, not happy that she's made some requests over the years to get some gutters and downspouts installed and over at the Quaker Meeting House, and she's been asking for a while now and nothing has been done. Um, and also has some doors that need to be replaced. Ms. Hebert, can you please contact, um, Mr. Merritt's in charge of doing that. Can you contact Mr. Merritt? I know Mr. Merritt's been busy. Um, you know, over the last, you know, six to nine months with his COVID preparation and all this other stuff that he's been doing. Um, and perhaps, um, we can, we can, uh, accommodate Ms. Texera. She's been doing the work in this town for a long time. She's very instrumental in, in our historical properties. Um, she's done a lot for this community and I, I would ask that, um, you know, her, her request be, uh, respected.
Um, I just have a question.
Sorry. Yeah, Mr. Deros.
Is there a trust fund concerning that particular building in town?
Uh, Ms. Hebert would answer that. I don't know.
Oh yeah, that's who I was directing it to.
Yeah, there is.
Okay, so. Otherwise, if the expense was too big, it'd come out of CPA money?
Um, if they, if they don't have an article from CPA that I'm aware of, but yeah, they could apply for it.
They have, they, she's, she's gone on to say it's been not just a year, but several years. So I think she has everything to do the job, including the doors. Um, and she wanted to see if she could hire an outside contractor, but we, we brought in the, well, which are kids anymore, they're boys, young men, um, on the payrolls and that's their job with, uh, Mr. Merritt's supervision. We don't have Mr. Alexander anymore. So, um, I'm just asking, I know that Jim's got a punch list to do and if he could just, you know, get it done. Um, it would be great.
And, and he does have this on his list. I know I've talked to him about it recently. There's just been a lot more pressing items that he's worked through, but I'll definitely follow up and, uh, make sure we get that, um, accomplished soon.
Okay, and my, Ms. Wonah, did you have anything to say?
No, no, I was, uh, I put in the similar request about the doors, I think a couple of months ago. So I'm disappointed to hear that that hadn't been done.
Okay, Ms. Hebert, ask Mr. Merritt to please do whatever, whatever he can. And again, I know he's busy, but, you know, the timelines that were laid out to me and.
Just go hire somebody to do it. I mean, honestly, if we can't do it in-house, just contract somebody out and get the thing done.
And the other selectman's announcement that I have is congratulations to Ms. Juliet Gonzalez. We formally did a citation on behalf of the Board of Selectmen, the town of Acushnet, official citation Board of Selectmen, be it known that the Acushnet Board of Selectmen hereby extends its congratulations to Juliet Gonzalez for reaching the status of Centenia, Centenrian. Enjoy your celebration of life. It is an amazing milestone awarded this day, January twenty-second, two thousand twenty-one. That is her birthday. Um, we do have a citation for you, Mrs. Gonzalez, and congratulations and happy birthday for making it to a hundred years old. Um, I hope I can make it there, but doubt it. So congratulations. I've, I've attended one in the past several years back. Um, related to the Hotty family at Century House, and, uh, this would be my second one, but obviously with COVID, I cannot attend any indoor parties or anything like that. So congratulations to her. Um, I wish you another hundred great years.
Yes, happy birthday, Julie.
Gentlemen, anything else for selectman's announcements?
Uh, Mr. Gaspar, just throw your plastic bags in the trash. Last month's report by Kathy Sylvia at the DPW where our town actually went down in their degree of contamination. As she mentioned, it was the first time Waste Management have heard of, uh, a town going in the reverse direction and all of that saves money every month for the town, uh, recycling.
Yep, and as I go out to recycle bin, what do I pull out of it?
The plastic bag.
Yeah, you guessed it. Um, Ms. Hebert? I have a question for you. I asked, um, actually, I think it was Selectmen Wonah that had a request for, uh, executive session, but I don't see this on my agenda.
Uh, no, we didn't get it. We didn't get it in. No.
Selectmen Wonah, I apologize. I apologize to you. Um, I asked for a new copy and it's with those requests and additional ones, but, um, apparently that hadn't gotten done. So I apologize to you, Selectmen Wonah, but, um, we can put it on our next meeting for executive session, Ms. Hebert. All right, with no other business, uh, in front of the board, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We are now adjourned. Have a great night, everyone.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.